Good evening, everyone. This is the Bloomington School Board meeting, Monday, April 23rd, 2018, 7:00 PM. All board members are present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moved.
Second.
On favor of approving the agenda is written. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First of all, I'm going to call upon Tamara Seif, the Executive Director of Community Education, for our Community Education Awards.
Thank you, Chair Steigaff, school board members, and Superintendent Fujitaki. Thank you for recognizing our community education program award winners this evening. We've had an exciting year and several award winners to highlight today. We'll be sharing our Community Education STAR Award winners, which stands for Staff That Are Remarkable, and other awards that our staff have recently earned. Briefly, the first award I want to share with you tonight, just happened last week. Surprisingly, we were chosen as the WCCO Good Neighbor of the Week and were highlighted on the radio for our programming. Michelle had nominated us, but we didn't know we had won, and one of our staff members happened to hear it on the radio, so we were very excited that our programming was highlighted. And emphasis was that our program is for all ages of learners in Bloomington, so that was very, very exciting. The second award I'm sharing with you is called the Hula Frog Award, and I have no idea why a frog would hula, but it is a local website community guide for parents. So parents look on the website for opportunities, camps, preschools, any event that their family or children might want to attend. And so this website, the parents chose and voted, for Camp Safari Most Loved, All Round Loved Camp, and Early Learners Academy Most Loved Preschool. So if I could please have those Early Learners Academy and Kids Safari staff that are here, please come on up. So Camp Safari runs all summer, so when people say, "School's out, have a nice break," that's not what happens at, for Kids Safari and Early Learners Academy. They provide programming all summer long. You have to visit sometime. It's amazing how organized they are, but organized in a way to have choices for every child and activities that help and serve every child, no matter the age. And for Early Learners Academy, our most loved preschool, Annie is here. Don't be shy. The parents love her, but we are so lucky to be able to have this program in three of our elementary schools and serve our parents and students in a before-after-school wraparound service around their preschool experience. And we have teachers who enroll their students in our program and lots of community members. So we're very honored, because again, this was parent-nominated, parent-voted on Hula Frog. So congratulations. So Jeff, Teacher Jeff, I will have you, please, come on up. Just so you know, Jeff is his middle name because he's Teacher Jeff Yunicki. In Early Learning Services, the Parent Advisory Committee nominates and awards a teacher every year. It's called the Heart of the Young Child Award. And this year, Teacher Jeff was chosen as the winner of this award. Teacher Jeff has worked for us for 20 years. We were trying to figure out the math. We're thinking it's about 20. He is a dedicated, caring, and compassionate teacher who works closely with our students and families in a preschool program at Oak Grove Elementary. He is also a leader in our program. You would be amazed if you saw Teacher Jeff in action in this classroom. There's really no words to describe. Those littles running in the room, "Teacher Jeff, Teacher Jeff," wanting to share everything about their life right now with him. He is an incredible, incredible teacher, and I welcome you to visit his classroom and see how amazing he is. So thank you, Jeff, for all that you do for our children, for taking care of their hearts, and more. Congratulations. Okay, so now on to our STAR Awards, the staff that are remarkable. So Roxanne, can I have you, please, come on up? Roxanne is one of our Community Ed STAR Award winners for 2018. Roxanne is a custodian at Valley View Elementary, but she is more than just her job title for Kids Safari Program at Valley View Elementary. So they nominated Roxanne for her remarkable work and connections. Roxanne has a relationship with every student in the Kids Safari Program. She knows their name, their siblings' names, and often know their parents', families', et cetera. She makes connections with every student and shows them that she cares about them. Roxanne demonstrates outstanding compassion, commitment, and dedication to the Kids Safari Program at Valley View Elementary. We are so lucky to have her as part of our team, so congratulations to Roxanne. Ruthie, would you please come on up? Ruth Beckman is our next STAR Award winner, who is also part of the Kids Safari Team. Ruth's knowledge and experience helped the administrative side of Kids Safari run smoothly. She's good with parents and explaining how to register students and answering all of their questions. And there's a lot of questions, because Kids Safari and Camp Safari and Summer Slam do so much, there's so many questions. She is thorough, dependable, and always willing to help a coworker. Ruthie truly makes a difference, because she is that welcoming into our program, when you're having a problem or don't know how to figure it out, helping hold their hand and take care of them, so they stay in our program and we serve their families, and hopefully their siblings in the future coming down the pipeline. So thank you, Ruthie, for all that you do for our program and taking care of not just the parents, but you take care of your colleagues, too. So thank you and congratulations. Jill, can you come on up, please? Our next award winner is Jill Lynch. Jill contributes to the MetroSouth Program by welcoming every new student, assisting all current students, and supporting every staff member. I'll say that again, welcoming every new student, assisting all current students, and supporting every staff member. You cannot describe her role in the front office at MetroSouth, all that she does to take care of the entire program. She is the first contact for phone calls, visitors, and information about MetroSouth Adult Basic Ed, many who speak little to no English, and she's trying to assist them and help them get to our campus and register for classes. Jill is also in charge of our ESL registrations, part of the graduation planning team, she's in charge of marketing materials, and pretty much every other duty as assigned. Jill is the glue that holds MetroSouth together, so that all staff can function at the highest level in their jobs and go in the classroom and teach, because Jill's got it. She's got the front office. Her passion makes a difference each and every day at MetroSouth for the students and for her colleagues, so congratulations, Jill. Kevin was not able to be here this evening, but he is a MetroSouth Math teacher, and he was also chosen as a STAR Award winner. Kevin is pretty incredible. He teaches all levels of math, pretty much fractions to Algebra II, and that's a pretty demanding job at MetroSouth. But I can say that Kevin has those students loving math. He has taken away the fear from math. He uses every possible teaching strategy. The students love math. We're trying to offer even more math with the help of volunteers now, because he's really created this amazing, passionate math program and making connections to the lives of our students in order to make that happen. So again, another person who makes an incredible amount of difference for all of our students at MetroSouth and has a lot, a lot of lesson planning every night. So I know he can't be here with us, but thank you, Kevin. And finally, at our STAR Awards Program in April, the Early Learning Services Team was nominated and chosen as Outstanding Team of the Year. The entire Early Learning Services Team are examples of professionalism and dedication to the students and families that we serve. Through the 2016-17 school year, this team went through many changes, and I would say over the last couple of years even before that. And there's actually too many changes to list, but they are incredible. The staff rose to the challenge in ways that are not often seen and continue to demonstrate high levels of professionalism for our students and our families. They are a team. Early Learning Services staff support each other and always put the needs of the students and families we serve first. Their passion and teamwork is felt at every site in our program, Pond, Southwood, Oak Grove Elementary, Valley View Elementary, Indian Mounds, and Washington, or Washburn Elementary. Well, we should take that one on, too. Without this exemplary team, Bloomington would not be able to serve so many children and families and meet all of their needs. It is with great pride that I say congratulations to the Early Learning Services Team for their outstanding teamwork for students and families. Thank you. Congratulations.
I just want to thank everyone that got recognized, and I think we should have another round of applause for all of those great recognition, all the great staff. All right, moving on, we now have reports from our student school representatives. We have Ethan Scopehammer from Kennedy High School and Jackson Damagala from Jefferson High School, so, you want to go first this time? Remind me next time, so he can go first.
I think it's your turn.
Oh, it's his turn? Okay. You guys know. All right, thank you.
My name's Jackson Damagala. I'm a junior at Jefferson High School, and since the last meeting I attended, Jefferson has been high gear after a long spring break. The Jefferson juniors took the ACT test a couple weeks ago, and a week after that, they took the MCA testing with the rest of the school, as in freshmen and sophomores. And on March 16th, the Career and College Center hosted the first career spotlight speaker, Matt Gregg, from the Nerdery to Speak with the Students Interested in Careers in Programming and Information Technology. The students found the experience engaging and informative. And the first animal freshman futures day, introducing freshmen to a wide variety of career fields from the professionals themselves to promote career and college readiness, happened at Jefferson. And with a slight delay for spring sports, they are starting up with baseball, tennis, track and field. And some other sports news, they named a new hockey coach, Tim. And then for Jefferson High School senior, Alexa Stryber qualified for the National Speech and Debate Association in the national tournament in Florida this summer. And for the upcoming events at Jefferson, the Jefferson Theater Company will present Hello Dolly at 7:00 PM from April 26th to 28th at 3:00 PM, and then April 28th to 29th in the Jefferson High School auditorium. And another event is Friday, May 4th, Jefferson High School will be having its annual Diversity Day celebration. And lastly, the Spring Community Forum for Parent Meeting is next Monday at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
At Kennedy, we have a few things going on as well. On May 29th, that's another month away, but we have Senior Excellence Night, where scholarships and, like, Senior Achievement Awards are going to be handed out. And the scholarships can be found in the College and Career Center and the Media Center. We have, I think, up to like $80,000 worth of scholarships that, like, are not being taken on. Also on the Career Center, we have a speaker every single Friday during second hour come in to talk about different careers. I know this past week, it was a police officer who came in and spoke about what it's like to be a police officer on a regular day basis. Diversity Day is May 4th. We have a lot of different booths in our school that are representing many different cultures that go on through our school. The Senior Achievement Award was last Monday. Many seniors were recognized for their academics, their arts, leadership, and volunteerism. And with AP tests and the summer slowly approaching, teachers are preparing us students for tests to come. And this week is the Food Drive. Kennedy, we have a battle between our first hours, and I believe the first hour, who has the most food donated, will have some sort of party, whether it's a breakfast party or a pizza party. And with spring sports starting off extremely slow, we're finally able to get outside and enjoy this beautiful weather that we've been having recently. We're excited to see teams take off, and always a special shout-out to the boys lacrosse team. We started off strong, and I get to bloat a little bit, because as a goalie, I took it down and scored a goal. That was impactful to the game. And with just a little update on the board Student Advisory Committee, or Council, we currently have a date and a place and a time set up for our community dodgeball tournament. It'll be on May 25th from 4:00 to 8:00 at the Kennedy Activity Center, and we hope to have a lot of people there. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, I see we have some students here for government class. I assume that's where you guys are back there? Yes? Okay. I have a statement to read, and then I'll give you some directions after that, okay? A requirement of our 12th grade government class is to observe a governmental meeting of some sort. Things that they may attend are city council meetings, school board meetings, courtroom proceedings, et cetera. The Social Studies Curriculum Guide identifies essential standards, one of which is to understand the role and influence of political processes and organizations by examining the role of interest groups, think tanks, the media, and public opinion on the political process and public policy formation. So now, if you each come up to the podium and give your name, your school, and your teacher, please.
I go to Jefferson High School, and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
I'm Jake Solzle. I go to Jefferson High School, and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
I'm Nicole Nagro, and I go to Jefferson High School, and my teacher is Mr. Storlein.
I'm Hunter Edwards. I go to Jefferson High School, and my teacher is also Mr. Storlein.
I'm Jacob Brandt. I go to Jefferson High School, and Mr. Storlein is my teacher as well.
I'm Charlie Bedore. I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is Ms. Dahlwyland.
I'm Jack Breen. I go to Jefferson, and my teacher is Mr. Carlson.
I'm Michael Evans. I go to Jefferson as well, and my teacher is also Mr. Storlein.
Thank you. At the close of the session, or after one hour, whichever is shorter, you can ask for a signature on the agenda from any of your administrative cabinet members. Those are the people that sit along this wall over here, and if you haven't found the agendas, there's some back there on the wall, so you just get a signature on there. Okay, thank you. All right, is someone like to make a motion to move Part A?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor of moving Part A of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to Part B. Someone like to make the first motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
To resolve, the School Board of Independent Schools District 271 adopts to prioritize physical education standards for grades K through 12, effective with the 2018-19 school year.
Second.
Are you introducing your guests this evening?
At least one of them, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Steigaff, board members, and Superintendent Fujitaki would like to thank you all for the opportunity to come and share some information regarding the work done, reprioritizing the physical education standards for the district. I would like to reintroduce you, if you haven't already met, Dr. Jenna Mitchler, Lead Curriculum and Instruction Teacher on Special Assignment. She will take the baton from here, introduce the rest of the teacher leaders on the team, and they will all take you through some information regarding physical education standards.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I have with me the team that's worked on the physical education standards this past year so far. So next to me, I have Janelle Barry Blasengame from Westwood. She's a physical education teacher there. Next is Dorothy Jones, who is one of our FIAED teachers at Olson Middle School. Kelsey Nash is our Elementary Curriculum and Instruction Specialist, who led the elementary team through the FIAED review. And then Marcy Koval is our Secondary Curriculum Specialist, who worked with that team on curriculum review. I'm going to start with just a little bit of a review of our curriculum review cycle. It's been a while since we've been here to talk with you about curriculum review. So this slide shows you what our foundational curriculum review process looks like. I'm just going to highlight a couple of things for you. So we work with curriculum review teams during Phase 1, 2, and 4 of our curriculum review cycle. The FIAED folks were in Phase 1 this last year, where they were looking at the newly-released standards from the Minnesota Department of Education. They were prioritizing those standards into essential standards, and then important and enhancing standards. And then from there, breaking the standards down into learning targets using the language of the standards. So as I mentioned, the Minnesota Department of Education released new standards for physical education at the beginning of this school year in 2017-18. We were very lucky, because Marcy Koval was on the review committee for the Minnesota Department of Education, so we had someone from Bloomington at MDE working directly with those folks. Once those standards were released, we convened the group of teachers, elementary and secondary, and started to look at the benchmarks and prioritize them, just as I described. And then the FIAED representatives met and tried to, and did, reach consensus on which of those standards would be prioritized and how, and then ensured that there was vertical alignment across all of the grade levels.
So the K-5 team was made up of eight members that we had from throughout our school district. We had representatives from, or representatives, excuse me, that represented DAP, which is our adaptive FIAED as well. And so we've been, this year, we met four times as a whole group, and then we get together as a group with all 10 elementary physical education teachers periodically throughout the year as well. So really, every building and every FIAED teacher that we have, K-5, was able to be represented and provide feedback on the standards prioritization this year. So here was our team with our members. We have Andy Minehart from OGE, Chris Tomberlin from Indian Mounds, Marlene Schreiner from Normandale Hills, Elizabeth Hill was our DAP representative, Jeremy from Poplar Bridge, Lynn from Olson, and Nicole from Washburn, and Janelle from Westwood as well.
And it's a similar structure at secondary as well. We had representatives from all five schools, multiple teachers from the schools as well, so that helps, because of the different grade levels that you break them down, prioritize the benchmarks within. So we had Nick Olson from Jefferson, Peter Savine from Valley View, Rebecca Lang, she represented DAP, Robert Miller from OGM, Tammy Cullen from OMS, Terry Roder from JHS, Danielle Anderson from Valley View Middle, and Dorothy Jones, who's here tonight, from OMS, Jennifer Bergland from Oak Grove Middle, and Maria Schilling, she teaches at both Kennedy High School and Valley View Middle, Matt Elson from OMS, and Erin Sportout from Valley View Middle as well. Minnesota, we, in the past, before we had MDE adopt standards, we've kind of always followed the SHAPE standards, and so when the Department of Education decided to adopt standards, they adopted the SHAPE standards with some small alterations to fit the needs of Minnesota specifically. But they are around these five pillars of this, looking at physical literacy, looking at kids have learned the necessary skills to participate in a variety of physical activities. So it's looking at not just necessarily sports, but all kinds of things to be healthy and fit, that they understand the implications and the benefits of involvement in various types of physical activities. They participate regularly. They are physically fit and are aware of their fitness levels, and they value physical activity as it contributes to a healthy lifestyle. So these standards are really focusing on teaching students about how to live a healthy lifestyle, which is important.
For the elementary, we came up with our mission statement for Bloomington. Through elementary physical education, Bloomington Public Schools will provide all students a foundation for lifelong fitness, social development, and an appreciation for physical activity and wellness. We just thought that was more than just having physical education, it's more about that sportsmanship, getting along with other students, and being social, in addition to getting those skills that would then be based on learning the games and how those are played in middle school. We want them to have that foundation of finding what you like to do and then doing that, not just going out and walking your dog or playing basketball, but finding something you enjoy doing. Sticking with that.
And for the secondary mission statement, through physical education, Bloomington Public Schools provides all students with knowledge, skills, and ethics to achieve and maintain a lifetime of physical wellness. So when we looked at all the standards that Minnesota gave us, we took out most of the words, but came up with that physical activities, physical fitness, and wellness were the main ideas of all the standards. So we put those together and came up with our mission statement, which we feel, for middle school and high school students, that their physical wellness was one of the main things that they need to focus on as they grow to be an adult.
We've presented these standards to different groups for feedback, so we've gone to the Pathways Advisory Committee, we've gone through the District Diversity Advisory Committee, although that was on a snow day, so it was virtual, but we did it. Building principals and K-12 physical education teachers all saw them as well. If they weren't on the review team, they had a chance to take a look at them as well and provide feedback. And those links also give you a look at all the different standards that they worked with. And as we mentioned before, when we do prioritize the standards, we kind of group them into essential standards and then supporting standards, so those standards that kind of rise to the top, and then the ones that support those particular standards.
So looking ahead, next year, we'll continue to meet with the review teams. We will be creating standards-aligned proficiency scales and assessments for the FIAED teachers to use as they assess those essential standards. So we'll continue, I think we have four meetings scheduled, four or five, depending on how much time we need for next school year. And then throughout the process, we really focus a lot on best practice in physical education. What does that mean? What does research tell us about what is best for kids? That comes first and foremost to anything else, and so we'll continue our study of that and look forward to meeting with the teams throughout next year as well. This is Marcy and I's contact information. If you think of any questions later, otherwise, we're happy to answer on questions as we can this evening as well.
It looks like we have some questions, so we'll go over to your, Mr. Storm, you want to start?
Sure. Thank you. Sorry, Director Bergstrom, he's the, he sets it up. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for coming and taking time to go through all of this sort of stuff. I did notice that we talk about grades 6 through 10, teams 6 through 10, and yet we still call it grade 6 through 12 standards. But yet, do students take physical education classes in their 11th and 12th grade?
They usually take them 9th and 10th grade. And then there are often elective courses as well that they could take in 11th and 12th grade if interested. But the required classes are usually taken in 9th and 10th grade.
So there aren't standards then for 11th and 12th?
No.
Director Storm, one of our students would like to respond.
She answered it better. Well, we have elective courses, but that's usually just for the people who just want to play games during classes or whatever. There's not really testing for it, so for the 11th and 12th grade classes.
There is an option, one of the hours that you can take.
Yes.
Of some sort, advanced FIAED.
Yep, yep, correct.
That's called having twice as much fun. So I need to know, did you have to stay late? Were you at, on campus all, all day, and then we made you come in here? Or did you get to go home and eat and then come back?
I personally had to pick up my twins that go to Oak Grove, but they play sports for Kennedy. So I had to go take them, go get some food, drop them off, and hopefully still make it to scouts later on tonight. So I have not had a chance to relax myself yet. Hopefully after scouts, I'll be able to do that tonight.
All right, go Eagles. So the question is, you mentioned teaching teamwork over and above getting exercise. Tell me, how's it going teaching teamwork? What does that look like?
For me in K-5, it's about learning that it's not only winning and losing. It's about when we're playing basketball, do I take the shot myself when there's three people on me, or do I try and pass it to somebody else? It's about working together as a team to make sure that everyone succeeds. We don't do a lot of interaction with competitive team sports. We teach more of the skills so that when they get to middle school, they know how to win. They know how to lose and not pout, or how to throw fit when they're throwing, when they are playing a game. If they don't make that basket, they learn not to pout. It's more of those social skills where they can interact in a large group, feel safe with trying within their team as a class when we're working on different skills.
I like the way that sounds. Dorothy, how about you?
Sorry. Just going to say, I get them from you, and let's see, pouting? Well, for middle school, so like this week, we started playing team handball. And the kids don't know that much about the sport, even though it's kind of rising. It's kind of become a pretty important sport, you know, in Olympics. So just understanding the game because it's new to them, but just realizing that they have a supporting staff with them, that they don't have to do it all. They can share the ball with as many people as they need to, and they don't feel like they have to carry all the burden of the whole team. But then there's a few kids that need to be challenged that, you know, you two or three are the main part of this team. You're the ones that have to pick everybody else up and get the team going. So I think it's a matter of, you know, making sure that everybody knows their role and what they're supposed to do, and how important that is, being a member of a team, and, you know, the job that you're supposed to do.
I concur with both of your answers. I'm a big proponent of teamwork. And I, whenever I hear the word team, these big ears perk up. So I appreciate the emphasis on more than the physical aspect. Thanks.
I want to thank you for kind of a broader sense of PE that I saw. You addressed the issue of technology and how that affects wellness. And that was surprising to me, but very appreciated. How do you go about that, since we have kids that are just so glued to their screens and need to get out and be a part of a sport or exercise in some way?
Well, I think that's where the lifetime fitness comes in. So every trimester for two weeks, I take the kids in the fitness center. And the kids that don't know sports and are, struggle with the skills of basketball and soccer, they thrive in there. That's where they love to be. And then knowing that, they're going to really do fine as an adult, being healthy and fit, and which is the main reason why we have our job, is to keep kids healthy and fit. So I think that the fitness center and working out on their own, having a workout plan where they're deciding, what I'm doing this day, am I working upper body, am I working lower body? And then always making sure they fit a cardio piece in there. So I do every day, and the kids don't like it, but every day I do what's called CC. It's core and cardio. Every day they come in, are we doing CC today? Yes, that's my main goal, core and cardio. And so now they've kind of, all year long, we've been talking about it and doing it. They just come in, what's for CC today? So it kind of, you know, developed into something that now they are looking forward to it, so.
Just a little beyond that, though, how do, how do you teach them how much time they're actually spending on screens and the detriment that can be?
I try to try and teach them a balance. Whereas right now, even when they're in the classroom, you have kindergartners that have iPads, almost a one-on-three. So when they're with me, what is the benefit of them having a screen? Let's get up and let's move. I try to expose them to all types of different sports, again, trying to find what do you like? Exercise is not only about jogging, doing curl-ups, doing push-ups, and jumping jacks. It's about finding something you enjoy doing. So by exposing them to this year coming up, or next year, we have short paddle implements as a new standard. That's going to be interesting because a lot of kids, it's like, what's that? Well, ping pong. So I just ordered some new equipment to do like ping pong, some of those lifelong recreational skills. I can't control how much iPad time they have. I can only control the time that they're with me. So trying to expose them and teaching them that, you know, sometimes it's easier to just put the iPad down in between commercial breaks. We all watch TV. How about we all try and do curl-ups until the next TV, your show comes back on? Encourage your parents to do that as well. I can't stop your parents from saying, all right, here's a TV, I have to go cook dinner, watch yourselves. But while you're doing that, try and challenge yourself to do something in that time in between, if you can. Can we stop them from being on technology? No. I have boys myself, 13, that love the Xbox, they love the PS4. But for my kids, you got to do some exercise first before you get to earn that time for the PS4. Encouraging them to get out and do things. I know the district has a track meet coming up for the K through 6 kids. Encouraging them, showing them, there is BAA out there. There are different things that you can do instead of being in front of your iPad. Unfortunately, elementary, that requires parental involvement. So trying to reach out to those parents and saying, you know what? This is what benefits your kid more than having that iPad time. Can we control that? Not yet. We're getting there, though.
Yeah, and I would just add to the balance aspect, too, that you're speaking of. We also talk a little bit about how you can track your fitness level using some of the technology that we have in place. So, you know, Marcy and Kelsey did a lot of work this last year trying to develop with our tech team a tool that the teachers can use with their students, and the students can actually use themselves to track their fitness level and their growth over time. So we found really beneficial ways to, in trying to get to that balance, bring the technology in in a way that's helpful.
Yeah, that is a great tool.
Do you have any questions?
I do, yeah.
All right, Director Corman has a question.
Yes, thank you. So as we know, we have a lot of students at all different levels who are athletes, perform different sports. And so there are times when our kids get injured while they're doing those, those kind of activities. And then they are unable to participate in the classes when they are in school for many different reasons, because, you know, they need to heal, or in sometimes even students who suffer from asthma and are not able to, to participate. What strategies do we use? What do we do with students at all different levels, you know, elementary, middle, and high school, who are not able to be in class, who cannot participate? Do they stay with you, or are they sent somewhere else? What can we do besides sending them for the, to the quiet room, for example?
In elementary school, normally if a kid is injured, their parent will send an excuse note, or they will have a doctor's note. And we modify the activities that they can do. We've had kids in wheelchairs, we have students that are, that have IEPs and have modified activities. I always tell the kids, you might be injured today, I just want you to try your best for today. Today's best might not be tomorrow's best, you might be injured tomorrow, but for right now, try your hardest and give your best. I understand you might have asthma. If I know they have asthma, they can see the nurse and take their inhaler. Otherwise, I try and communicate with parents and let them know, there might be some limitations. What can we do to keep your child active? As far as like grading, a kid is never penalized for not being able to participate. It's all about trying your hardest and giving your best, learning the skills that we are presenting. I never send the kid away if they are unable to participate. They can at least gain the knowledge base, even if they're not able to physically do the skill, if that makes sense.
Well, I think there's every different way that you can modify something so that the kid could do it. You know, like if a kid breaks his arm, you can modify it for them to do it, do it in a different way. And I think we know most of the modifications that we can fit in, you know, to the student's workout or activity, and usually that pretty much works out.
Now, are those like established procedures that are district-wide? Like, do all schools kind of have the same system in place that you guys have agreed on?
I can say for, for the elementary, if the student has a doctor's note when they come in, we go with whatever the doctor's note says. If mom writes a note for Westwood and they say, my student was injured, or my kid fell yesterday and hurt their knee, all right, little Billy, try your hardest, give your best, let me know if you're hurting, I can send you to the nurse. As far as a district-wide policy, I know that if a student comes in with a note from a doctor, they are excused. If it comes in from a parent, I believe that it's every physical education teacher's discretion on how much they want the student to try.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we need to vote on this resolution, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving on to the next one. Is there someone that would like to read this one?
There's a resolution with this one.
I'll go and read this one as well. You ready? Be resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 adopts the prioritized media and technology standards effective for the 2018-19 school year.
One second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Weiser this evening to introduce the rest of your team, I think? Welcome.
Evening Chair, Steiglaff, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. Brought a small team tonight here to discuss the media and technology standards. The process is going to sound familiar because you just saw another one of these. I'll introduce the team members and then turn over the presentation to them. Our intent this evening is to walk you through our process to review the media and technology standards. With me tonight, I have Karen Qualley, Digital Learning Coordinator out of the Technology Department, Marcy Koval, Marcy's a twofer tonight, you get to hear her twice, out of the Curriculum Instruction Department, and Beth Flotmeyer, who's a Media Director over at Oak Grove Elementary across the way. Before I turn it over to them, I'll just say this has been a great experience for us. The cross-department work and the site-level work with our media specialists is important and valuable, and so it's been a really rewarding process.
So much like we do in the curriculum review when we're looking at academic standards, we developed a representative model of different representations of different departments. So we had people on the media, from the Media and Technology Teams, classroom teachers, as well as people from Learning and Teaching. We also went to the different groups for feedback, so the same groups that we went to for the curriculum review in an academic, we did the same process for the media standards. And this is the same diagram that we looked at the last five minutes ago. And we, again, use that same framework to help collaborate with technology as they design their media standards program. And they also, in the same, you know, breadth, they want, they prioritize their standards, they want to create a viable curriculum for the students with the media standards. They use a representative model that reached consensus on a selected number, manageable numbers of standards, again, looking at vertical alignment as, as kids progress from kindergarten to 12th grade, and collaborative, looking at collaboration and co-teaching with classroom teachers on how we can implement and make sure these standards are being addressed.
And so the process involved pulling standards from a few national organizations. ISTE, the International Society for Technology and Education, American Association of School Librarians, and Common Sense Media. And in this process, we prioritized the standards that we thought we wanted to provide in that student experience for Bloomington learners, and making sure that the standards we selected had endurance, leverage, and that they prepared our students for the next level of learning, again, with that vertical alignment. And so just a broad overview of the media and technology standards, we really organized or sorted the standards into three areas. Reading and information literacy, digital literacy, and digital citizenship. And I'll take a second to go into a definition of those terms. When we talk about reading and information literacy, we're really making sure that our students have that love of reading and that we're promoting that love of reading, combined with making sure our students are able to engage in the research process. Knowing how to cite information is one skill, but more importantly, we really want to focus on how do you find information, know it's good information, so that you can make informed choices in life. Digital literacy, for us, is helping our students make sure that they know that they can innovate and create using these tools, that they're not just using them for necessarily their homework, but that they're learning skills that will take them through life, learning how to communicate and to collaborate, and really understanding the layers under how technology works in their life. And then finally, digital citizenship instruction really aims to make sure that our students engage in positive, safe, legal, and ethical online behavior. And again, that promotion of a balanced use of technology and considerations for how it impacts your life and those around you.
So our next steps then are, with the elementary, we are going to collaboratively work on units of study within those standards. And we are planning and scheduling collaboration with our classroom teachers. And we are currently looking at co-teaching models and how we can integrate the standards into classroom units as well.
So what questions could we answer for you all?
All right, we'll start with Mr. Storm again.
Great, this is really fun being first for a change. The references that you have in there about the ISTEAS, AASL, and Common Sense Media, how were those selected and are there competitors? Like, for instance, Common Sense Media, there must be other competitors out there. And what standards or how were they selected? How did they get that, all that?
Sure, I can give you sort of a brief summary of those three organizations and some of the thinking behind that selection. Common Sense Media has evolved over the last decade into a free and online nonprofit scope and sequence and curriculum material that has really evolved into not just information for keeping students safe and thinking critically with technology in school, but for families. And it also provides resources outside of the school day for families looking to make sure they're having those thoughtful conversations about technology use. So for that, it's one that gets referenced frequently in a school librarian's work. And it's one that, among others, Google is now starting to have an emerging platform that offers similar lessons. But Common Sense Media has been one that we've turned to for quite a number of years. There's a lot of familiarity with this program. The American Association of School Librarians, the AASL standards, are really when, when you get your credential to become a school librarian or a media specialist, this really is the set of standards that you learn to teach and implement, again, with that focus on making sure that our students are able to think critically and make great decisions based on getting good information. And then ISTE is pretty much, again, it's the standout in looking at how students use technology. And along with a set of standards for students, they have standards for teachers, for administrators. One of the challenges for our process was to make sure that we couldn't take all the standards from all three organizations. And so it was a pretty massive endeavor to look at all the standards, lay them out on strips of paper everywhere, lay them out, and start to look at alignment, not only with the Minnesota State standards, where our standards are already embedded in some content areas, but then making sure that we're picking the best from each group so that there's not... but then making sure that we're picking the best from each group, so that there's not too much redundancy or crossover in those standards. So, we think we have a very Bloomington-specific process that we think meets the needs of our students and that works well with how the media program works in Bloomington.
And so, but besides the Minnesota standards, and we've always had good Bloomington standards set up for all these programs, now there are these extra or outside organizations that might want to influence. And I know through ties and other organizations that we've had in the past, there's been a lot of collaboration and just sharing of all of that sort of stuff. So, I just want to be sure that sometimes organizations get, pardon the expression, political and have their own programs that they want to use, and so they'll spend money and everything else like that, and just to get us educators to use them all. And so, that's, I just wanted to clarify that these were all well-thought-out and with the group and some of the other organizations that we belong to have an understanding that this is best for our students and teachers. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Bergstrom.
First of all, thanks for coming. I, I hope you guys got a chance to get a bite. I'm looking at your Media and Technology Standards Vision Statement, and it says that students will use technology to innovate and create. Can you give me just off the top of your head an example of innovation and creation?
I'll give one, and I'm sure Beth has, has a few examples as well. When I was at the middle school, we were really excited about Makerspaces, coding, and infusing that and not doing that as a, something separate to the things and projects our students were doing in their content areas, but really infusing and embedding that work. And we've seen some growth in that area. And so, when we talk about innovate and create, it's not, it doesn't mean that it happens different than what we might do in English or what we might do in a social studies class. It's that collaboration with the media person or the technology integration is to kind of think of some new creative ways to show students how they can use different tools to connect to that content in new, meaningful ways.
For example, one of the things that I did yesterday was I had a fifth-grade class that was using our Little Bits kits that, so they were creating little modules where they were making buzzers and little cars that could go with a battery. They were teaching third graders how to do that, once they had already, once they had figured it out. So, they were able to then collaborate with another grade level, and they had to know it well enough that they could teach it to another grade level. And then, in thinking about the primary kids, right now, currently, all of our K2s are using CSOW, and on a daily basis, we see students either creating a snowman selfie when it snowed the other day, and then writing about it, how, how they were a snowman, to, and then having parents then being, being able to comment on those. Just this last week at Oak Grove, we had 77 parent comments on their students, their students' work. So, it's a nice communication tool as well.
Great, thank you. Those comments are very helpful, just for us to hear, and I'm sure for the thousands that are watching us at home. It's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, Director Bergstrom.
I had a fun day on Tuesday last week where I was at Westwood and was working with a student who was writing a report on, on China. And so, she was trying to work her technology to get her pictures and to get together what she wanted to say, and it was really encouraging to see her embrace it and work with it and try it when it didn't work. And I thought, I remember when my sons were doing a similar project and how far it's come to what they've done. In the summer, I used to have my kids do a research project, and so they took what they learned in the classroom and brought it home and, and then were able to do more. But I think that's great. But another thing I noticed when I was reading all the standards was the importance of the ethics of using the technology and understanding even the impact of what they do and how that can affect others. And so, I think, I applaud you for, for putting that into the standards, because I think, yes, it's great to have technology, but we have to understand that it's also a part of our social life, and it can affect one's reputation for the future and how they either use it or abuse it. And so, thank you for being insightful enough to include that part.
I had teachers spoke eloquently about finding that balance, right? Use a piece of technology when you get some benefit, but also get up and move.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for being here. We need to also vote on this resolution, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay. Mr. Bergstrom, do you have the next two resolutions? Is that correct? Are you doing both of them?
I do, and I actually cleaned my glasses for both of them. Yes, all right, let's see, make sure we're in the right one here. All right, this is, um...
First one is the, the tenured teacher on partial unrequested leave?
Yep.
Number three?
Okay. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 271 that it is proposed that Megan Logaring, a teacher of District 271, be placed on a partial unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits for .133 FTE while retaining a .867 FTE art teacher position in the district, effective at the end of the 2017-2018 school year on June 30, 2018 pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A.40 subdivision 11 and the negotiated leave policy of the district. Resolve further that the clerk of the school board shall issue a written notice to said teacher regarding the proposed placement on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits as provided by law, and said notice shall be in substantially the following form. Notice of proposed placement of, on unrequested leave of absence. You are hereby notified that at a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 271, held April 23, 2018, consideration was given to your placement on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits for .133 FTE while retaining .867 FTE art teacher position in the district as a teacher of Independent School District number 271, and a resolution was adopted by a majority vote of the board proposing your placement on the unrequested leave of absence effective at the end of the 2017-2018 school year on June 30, 2018 pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A.40 subdivision 11 and the negotiated unrequested leave policy of the district upon the grounds described in the said statute, and which are specifically as follows. Reduction of student enrollment in licensure area. Under the provisions of the law, you are entitled to a hearing before the school board, provided that you make a request in writing within 14 days after the receipt of this notice. If no hearing is requested with such period, within such period, it shall be deemed acquiescence by you to the school board's proposed action.
Wow, thank you, Mr. Bergstrom. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We have Mary Burrows here to give us some information on this, I think.
Chair Stagoff, Superintendent Fujitaki, and members of the school board. It's that time of the year that I come forward with our staffing changes for the next year. And this is a tenured teacher who is losing one section because of, you know, the enrollment in the class. So, that's all the information on this one.
Thank you. All right, all in favor, so am I. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. All right, let's start on this side.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to the fourth one, which also we roll call when we get to it. So, don't forget.
Madam Chair, if I may, all right, please bear with me, this one's another long one, and forgive me if I mispronounce any names. I move the approval of a separate resolution to non-renew all of the named probationary teachers and vote as one. Resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number 271 pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 122A.40 that the teaching contract with the above-named probationary teachers in Independent School District number 271 is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2017-2018 school year, June 30, 2018, and is not renewed for the 2018-2019 school year. And be it resolved further that the clerk of the school board shall issue written notice to said teacher regarding non-renewal of the teacher's contract as provided by law, and that said notice shall be substantially the following form. Notice of termination. You are hereby notified that at a regular meeting of the Board of, School Board of Independent School District number 271, held April 23, 2018, a resolution was adopted by a majority roll call vote, giving action that your teaching contract will not be renewed effective at the end of the school year, June 30, 2018, and is not renewed for the 2018-2019 school year. Said action of the board is taken pursuant to Minnesota Statute 122A.40. You may officially request that the school board give its reason for the non-renewal of your teaching contract. However, such request must be received within 10 days after the receipt of this notice. Now, if I may, I'll read the names of the teachers on this. Shelley Albert, Amy Anderson, Bailey Austin, Jacob Devine, William Durfee, Alec England, Alu Toyer, Farmado, Andre Francisco, Rebecca Galindo, Benjamin Hartzey, Mary Hi, Emma Hor, Anita Jarvis, Allison Kalkman, Jeffrey Cosell, Rachel Kruger, Rita Miller, Rose Mingo Holtz, Brandy Musser, Gregory Nesbit, Melissa Reese, Rachel Salloway, Sean Slawick, Kathleen Smith, Stephanie Vries, Julie Yonkey, and Andrea Zible.
For a second.
Second.
All right.
Again, this is our normal staffing process that we do every year. People can be brought forward for non-renewal for various reasons, including changes of, you know, classes, sections. In special education, it can mean people have graduated or the needs of the district have changed in that area, in that particular, you know, sped area. There's a variety of reasons why people are non-renewed, so.
Madam Chair, this, this is a formality that we usually do every year based on a snapshot in time about what the needs are. Now, it could change from now until September, and they could all be, or some of them could be called back.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay. But it's just a formality that we have to do.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All right, roll call this time, we'll start on this side. You want to start?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Burrows. All right, I think that moves us to board member reports.
Madam Chair.
I'm waiting on you.
All right.
I waited.
All right, just, I'll, hopefully I'll be able to get through these quickly. We, the board had the Senior Achievement Award banquet, it was last, last week. As Ethan mentioned, there are awards in academics, arts, leadership, and volunteerism. It's always a, it's, it's always a very fun evening for me as a board member. I think it's important to know that for those that were, that were chosen, there were approximately 65 students from each, each school, there were family members that, that came, the banquet hall is full, but the 65 members from each school don't represent all of the, of the nominations. So, there is, there's more students than we have room for. And, and for me, as a, as a parent on the Kennedy team, I know that there are a number of people that, that know what these students do, that see these students, that know the good things that they're doing. I think it's important for them to know that another adult, or two, or three, or, or staff members see these students, they recognize their talents, and they advocate for them. So, there's, there's a lot that goes on just to get the students through that process and into that banquet, but it's always a fun, a fun evening. So, many thanks to all the, all the staff, all the parents, the sisters, brothers, all the people that make those evenings a reality for those seniors to earn those awards, because they, they can't get there on their own, and they do have a support system somewhere along the line, so. I had the opportunity to attend a Rocket Rally over at Ridgeville Elementary. This was an all-school rally in the gym slash lunchroom, and the, the focus that particular day was on their volunteers. They, they wanted to make sure that they, they thank all of their many volunteers for all the, the hours. Maybe they do a half hour, maybe they do lunch, maybe they do greeting in the morning, maybe they're, maybe they're a reading helper, maybe they do some, some math help, or they'll pull the student out in the hall or somewhere where they can, where they can help out. But I know that our stools wouldn't be as robust as they are without our volunteers, and this was a wonderful way to give back and just simply to say thank you to the volunteers. So, that was a lot of fun to see. Also, had the opportunity to, to take a drive, I took many times in college. I, I took a drive down to St. Peter, I went to college at Mankato State, but I went down there for MSBA Phase IV training. It had to do with policy and community engagement. I happened to be on both those committees here in Bloomington, and the day was cut in half, the first half was policy, and then community engagement. And I have a whole book of fun things that I'm, I'm excited to share with my coworkers, but it's, it's nice to get together with other board members from greater Minnesota and just hear how they do it, what they do, the questions they have, and the, the, the information that I enjoy the most are the, sort of the sidebar conversations where somebody says, "You mean you have this?" or "You have that?" When I mentioned that we have an attorney that actually sits at the board table with us, they all said, "Wait a minute, come here, let me, let me hear about this, let me hear about that." So, David, for, you know, 14 seconds, you were, you were a popular guy. But it's, it's, it was a lot of fun, it was nice to get down there. They didn't have a local presentation of that, normally they, they would have a, I think it's up in Maple Grove that we go, but that was a lot of fun. Had a great afternoon, or it was this, yesterday, today's Monday. Sunday, had an afternoon date with my wife. We went over to see the play, The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime. And for those that don't know anything about it, there is a book, you can read that book. The students who put this play on, they hit a grand slam. It was, it was fantastic. And I, and I know that I'm saying that with a certain amount of surprise in my voice, but I've been to a number of plays, you know, on the years that I've been on the board, and this one really, really, I can honestly say this was at the top. So, it was, they had a Friday and a Saturday, and then a Sunday afternoon show. It was absolutely fantastic. So, kudos and applause go out to the, to the talented students that acted in the play, but also the staff behind the scenes, behind the curtains, that made that happen. So, I'll end my report right there.
Thank you. All right, anyone else want to go? Okay, Mr. Sorm.
Sure, as, as Director Bergstrom mentioned, community engagement. Well, as you all should know, it's elementary carnival time now, starting now and into May, and so we all have an opportunity to go to our schools or go to other schools, just because there's so much fun to do. I know Beth and I were over at Wash, or Westwood the other night, but when we talk about community engagement, it's so much fun to see the parents and neighbors in a slightly different setting than we normally see them. And so, it was so much fun to be able to, to engage. And then on Saturday morning, we had, I was lucky enough to go to the volunteer appreciation breakfast that the city puts on, where there's over 220 people that have volunteered, you know, our own district people have volunteered and everything else like that. But it was another opportunity for community engagement. But it was another opportunity for community engagement, because we would all want to know about the many challenges that we have in our school district. And I satisfied them all, so that you won't be getting any phone calls now, because everything was settled at that Saturday morning.
Thanks, yeah.
But, yeah, and those are just some, but, but because it's this time of the year where there's musicals, there's all kinds of choir concerts, there's all kinds of things going on, be ready to avail yourself of that, because it's a great opportunity to share with our community what we do. That concludes my report.
Anyone else? Okay, go ahead.
There's been just a lot of great things happening. I know I saw Tom, and Dawn, and wasn't there somebody else? And Dick, at the, the Special Education Awards to those that work with our special need students. And, and, and Nellie was there, too. And it was inspirational. Sometimes you were moved to tears, just because of how caring these people were. And one of my friends, actually, she's one of the bus drivers, and she got an award. And I was really encouraged, because she is such a giving person, and it was fun to hear that. So there was that, there were the senior awards. I had an outstanding experience at the Westwood Health Fair that they had. And what was really unique is, they had these kids doing stuff all day, and they didn't just focus on one hour, or one aspect of health. They talked about things from even screen time before bedtime, to sunscreen, and helmets, and, you know, insects, and hydration, and things that the kids will need for the summer. And they had students that are nursing students from Normandale College come in, and each, each group of probably about six students put together a station that talked about one of these different aspects, and the kids rotated around, and received literature about those things that they could take home then. So I was really impressed. I spent a number of hours, probably three hours there. I didn't plan to stay that long, but I was having so much fun. And then I was also at Westwood last Tuesday, and had a great time, just being in classrooms for about a half hour at a time, and very impressed with some of the teachers, the technology they're using, the group projects they were working on, the amazing work of Diane Otten and her team, who work with kindergartners, and I, I couldn't believe how much she was putting into that class. So, so my hat is off to her, and some of the other teachers, especially Luann, I think it's Doc, Docerty, who did the health fair at Westwood. And then, of course, we were at the, the festival, and Tom showed up there, too, and so did Dick, and so it was kind of fun to see you guys there. And then, on Saturday night, Dick and I, and Dawn, were rocking with the, oh, what did we call that group?
Transition.
The transition, Bloomington Transition Group, that had their ball and benefit. And those kids, if you haven't hung out with them, they are so much fun. And what was really fun for me is that I had been a substitute para with one of the young boys. His name was Gino. And Gino was a little shy, but he would dance with me, and it was fun to draw him in, and see him have a good time. So, just great, being in the district, enjoying everything about it.
All right, Mr. Ben Higginson.
So as Director Burksdom and Representative Scopamorata talked about, that we had the Senior Achievement Awards last Monday, but what they both felt to say is that our man Ethan here was one of the recipients. Congratulations, Ethan.
Yes.
So I just want to throw that out there. And also, as Director Sorum talked about, we are in carnival season, and that's probably my family's favorite season, because I take my kids to all the carnivals, and I give them tickets, they go do their thing. I do my community engagement, talk to parents and, and staff. My wife gets a couple hours of, of quality alone time, so, she loves it. So on Friday, we, we went to Indian Mounds in Westwood, and then Saturday, went to Hillcrest. And this upcoming Friday, we have, we have one at Oak Grove, and Ridgeview, and Washburn, and then the following Friday, we have it at Normandale Hills. And I'm pretty sure all of these carnivals are in, in need of volunteers, so it's a great way for you guys to get your community engagement in, or for Cabinet Members, or Student Board Representatives. You can go on their website and find their signup genius, and just sign up for an hour, and you'll have a lot of fun. They're fun doing these little games. So I just want to throw that out there. That's it.
Anybody else? Okay, go ahead, Marie.
Well, I just want to remind everyone of the upcoming Back City Vigil, Bloomington United for Youth supports. It'll be Friday, May 4th. It starts at 6:00 PM. It goes through Saturday morning at 7:00 AM, at the Oak Grove Presbyterian Church, and you could go to backcityvigil.mn, or bloomingtonyouth.org to find out more about that.
Okay, well, good. My turn. Well, as you know, I was not able to be here last time we had a meeting, so I could not bring my, my reports that night, and it's been already like a month and a half without reports. So I do have a long list for you. I have like six pages, so I'll try to be, I try to go really quickly on this, and not mention, not go into details. But anyway, as you mentioned before, I've attended the Senior Achievement Award banquet, as well as the Special Education Awards banquet. Both of them, very fun as always, and very inspiring. Also had the opportunity to go to Kennedy High School after the horrible tragedy that happened in Parkland, Florida, with the school shooting. I was able to attend the Kennedy High School reflection day, that our students organized, and it was very well organized. I think both the administrators, and the teachers, and all the staff members, and, as well as the students, did a great job. So, that was, that was a good, a good thing for me, too, to be there. Then I stayed, the same day I stayed, and had a good conversation with Chris Grins, our Assistant Principal at Kennedy. We talked about online classes for next year, we talked about the increase of classes, the PSEO classes, and we also talked about discipline. Very good conversations. And after that, I went to also Middle School, and had also a good conversation with our principal there, also talking about creative making spaces, and the use of flex areas. So we took a very nice tour around the school. I was able to get into one of the classrooms, and see our teacher, and fax teacher, and students in action, working on creating things online. And so one of the creations from one of the group of students was having a cellphone that can be used on both sides, you know, with screens on both sides, so different purposes for the same cellphone. And there were a whole lot of different creations, you know, just wonderful, wonderful time there. Talking about, talking with our principals, one of the things that they both mentioned in the areas that are, that we have more need for funding, is mental health. And mental health also for students who are not special ed. They also talked about the need of having more social workers, and intervention teachers. So those are kind of things to keep, keep in mind, as we continue to advocate for funding for school districts, for public schools. Also had an opportunity to visit the Community Education Building, and had a conversation with our Director of Community Education, with Tom Racif, about the programming and the wonderful job that they're doing there. So I will go into details, because you guys know about the, the good things that are happening there. Also had a meeting with the, attended the meeting with the Bloomington Advocacy Council, the Pathways Advisory Committee, and, let's see. I'm sorry, I'm trying to go through everything before I jump into AMSD. Okay, I think I can go to AMSD now. So, for AMSD, I also attended the Legislative Committee meeting, as well as the Board of Directors meeting. For the Legislative Committee, I have the AMSD 2018 Legislative Platform. One, two, three, four, I think I have extras for our students, too, if they would like, if they would like a copy of this. So you can take a look at the Legislative Platform, did you get one done? Superintendent? Thank you. Okay, good. And if you go through the platform, you're going to see that, you know, the priorities that AMSD has so far in the platform include stabilize education funding, we have reform and stabilize the Teachers Retirement Association Fund, increase and diversify the teacher workforce, enhance taxpayer equity, reduce mandates, and enhance local control, and ensure safe and modern school facilities. During the last meetings, also conversations regarding school safety, and guns in schools, that type of conversation was also brought to the Board of Directors, AMSD, and I will, that one is not here, because that one is, is kind of a new one, that was voted on. So what I'll do is, I'll just send you that other, that other edition. It, it is more like, as, it is more a position paper on guns in schools. So the position, pretty much, for AMSD is disagreement on bringing gun, any type of guns in schools, for safety reasons. So go over that document when you have a chance, and if you have any questions, you can let me know, and I can also direct you to the AMSD site for that. During the Legislative Committee, let's see. Oh, during the AMSD Board of Directors meeting, we also have, we have a, a special guest, and the special guest was from Bloomington, and that was Rick Kaufman, the Director of Community Relations and Emergency Management. He brought a very, very good presentation on school safety. So the presentation was called What Columbine, Sandy Hook, and Stoneman Douglas Taught Us About Being Prepared. Very, very detailed presentation, very well done, so, thank you, Superintendent, and Rick Kaufman, who's not here today for that, for that very, very well presentation, very well done. Also then, oh, for the last one, then I have a, a video for you, just to end my report, and that is also part of AMSD, which is related to the position on special education funding. So this is basically the intention of this video, and the intention of the Legislative Platform for AMSD about special ed, is that AMSD supports funding for this, for special education during this session. That also includes funding to address the Special Education Cross-Subsidy in the supplemental budget request that is, has been brought by the Governor. So I will leave you with that presentation. I think I'm done. If there's anything else, then I'll include it in the next, in the next report next time. Thank you. And our wonderful Deb will bring it up. Maybe not?
Rocking up.
It's there, it's just not showing.
We're the technology guy. Do you know?
I think it's changed.
Filtre. Sounds wonderful. It does.
Relaxing.
Pink Floyd?
That is the video, yeah. Let's just know, yeah. But that one is.
I'm going to go ahead and give my report while, or start up my report while they're trying to get it up here, and if they don't get it, I guess we'll, we'll get it another time or something. All right, it seems like our Board has been very active in the community, so I think I've talked about many of the things that I attended, but there's just a few more on here. Director Kaufman brought up that we had the advocacy council meeting, and I just wanted to highlight that most of that meeting was also talking about the things that we're supporting, like the special ed funding, and other bills that are going on at the Capitol. And so it's really a great group of Bloomington individuals that are advocating for our school, and, and interested in, in meeting. It's a relatively new group, and we will be bringing at least one more new name forward that is asked to join us also, so. And then the Community Engagement Committee will be meeting tomorrow afternoon, so look forward to meeting with my colleagues that are on that. I also had a chance to attend the performance of the delayed, because it was canceled for the weather, so the, the rescheduled performance will move on this weekend. And once again, you know, another great show that, that our schools and our students do, and, and that our staff and volunteers are so good at helping our students with. I also just wanted to mention the, the Director, BB talked about the ball for the transition students, but you know, this is only the second year that we've had that, and what a wonderful idea that the staff that put that together. And so they're hoping that it will continue to grow, and that, and wanted to mention that they hope that more people, more, more, more of the staff and School Board can show up for it, and talk about students that were having a good time. They, they were definitely having a good time, and you know, there's really not a lot of opportunity for a lot of those kids to go to a dance like that, so I thought it was very nice for them to start putting this together. And then, the last thing I got to do is, I did get to go on a home visit with our Birth to Two Early Childhood Special Ed Team, so this team consisted of a OT and a special ed teacher, and myself, and so I thought how appropriate that we had the whole early childhood, not the special ed, but the other early childhood here tonight, getting recognized, and, and just, you know, what a, what a service that people don't realize that we also have in the district, and that we also have many students that qualify for early childhood once they're located and we find them. And, you know, the goal is to get everybody ready for kindergarten, so what a great thing that we're doing. It was a wonderful experience to get to go on a, on a Birth to Two visit, so, thank you. That's it. Do we have it now? All right, we're almost there.
Let's see what we can.
So please share this video in your social media sites.
Why not?
Is there another version where they talk?
No, I don't think so. That's the only version I've seen. That's the one. Thank you for getting that going for us. I just wanted to add, this, this was from the Metropolitan School Districts, but this was also focus of the Minnesota MSBA, all of the school boards, and they asked school boards to pass this resolution, and so school boards across the entire state have passed, also passed a resolution to support the fully funding special ed, and finding a solution for funding special ed, so. And so school boards across the entire state have passed, also passed the resolution to support the fully funding special ed and finding a solution for funding special ed. So it's not just the metropolitan schools, just to clarify that. All right, moving on to Superintendent's report.
Great, thank you. Artistry is one of our friends of education. Bloomington Public Schools and Artistry have a longstanding partnership. This partnership is one of seven nationwide. It has been selected by the John F. Kennedy Center for Performing Arts in Washington DC to participate in their Partners in Education Program. This program helps art organizations develop and expand art programming with their respective school districts. Two representatives from Artistry and Rachel Gins, our elementary curriculum and instruction specialists are in Washington DC this week for training. So this is a great opportunity to enhance education, art education programming for the children of our community. The second thing is on the Community Center Stakeholders Working Group. Recall, board members Marie Baralata and Dick Bergstrom and I are new members of this working group. We've had, we've participated in two meetings. The third meeting will be on May 1st. We'll keep the board informed of any developments. That concludes my report, thank you.
All right, is there any other business to come before the board? All right, maybe it's adjourned. Great job working on that, Nellie. Did I say great job? We talked about a great job. Yeah, it's going to like.